Please have everyone standing for the pledge and then stand for the random acknowledgement statement. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands our nation under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
The Salamanca City Central School District acknowledges the homeland of the own known Duwaga, the people of the great hills, the Seneca People whose ancestral and modern day land Salamanca School District now stands and whose water we enjoy. We stand with all indigenous peoples and their resolve to remain connected to their land. While we cannot undo what has been done, it is the goal of the Salamanca City School District to recognize the history improvements that will benefit the next seven generations of the indigenous students.
Thank you. Dr. Beeler will be joining up for more tonight. Mr. Early is excused. So do we have any changes to the agenda?
Yes, there are three changes since it was initially published on Friday. Under the travel conference, we corrected the name of Jody Pickett to Jordi Norcas Pickett. We removed an item that was scheduled to be surplus and so we took that off of the surplus list. And the February twenty one finance committee that was scheduled for five P M. Has been canceled. Those are the only three changes.
Then we need a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion second.
Motion by Carrie, second by Dale, all in favor.
I.
Post abstaining motion here. Item three A is our long term facilities plan and long term financial plan. So Karen, take it away.
It's gonna be good and I forgot my stuff, so.
Oh, good.
We're going on memory and somebody's getting old. This is the financial. There we go. All right. So a couple of things we're going to talk about in the reserves, the long term financial or the long term facilities plan, the long term financial plan, and then grant progress. So as you know, the reserve funds are all basically they're our way of saving money through different things. Um, I know some people when they they budget personally, they put X number of dollars away for their car payment. They put X number of dollars away for their insurance, et cetera, things like that. So our reserves are really essentially different things like that. Thank you. So we have um, all these reserves, we have worked with compensation, unemployment, E R S, T R S, E V L R, capital reserve, repair reserve, those are all items that are specific reserves that are legally adoptable by New York State. So we have ten point seven million dollars set aside in reserves for different things that we may run into. So workers' compensation, we pay that insurance on a monthly basis, comes around, it's a bill every year, unemployment, same thing. Um, E R S is the employees non instructional retirement fund, T R S is on the instructional staff, retirement fund, E V L R is employee benefits, coach requirement. And I still need to get any more information on that one. Capital reserve is the five million. That can go up to a total of twenty five million. It was approved by the voters last May. Uh, so we put five million dollars in that at the end of last year. And the repair reserve is one point six million and that's for, you know, one time repairs and things that come up. That, you know, you can't anticipate when something's gonna break. So then we have a bunch of commitment ones. Those funds, we know that we have all these different things, the O P A D technology, capital outlay, equipment replacement, turf replacement and retirement awards, those are all items that we know are going to be expenses. So we'll use turf replacement. We know that the turf has a fifteen year warranty on it. So in fifteen years, we're gonna have to replace it. So in fifteen years, instead of having to come up with three million dollars, we're gonna save it each year between now and then, and we'll have it. We won't have to increase the budget by this large amount to cover this one time expense. And then we'll start all over again. So it's the same thing for the other things, equipment replacement, maybe something major that breaks. Capital out.
So for the commitments, do we have to get voter approval to go in and use it? So like when the time comes for the turf replacement, do we have to look at that out?
No, we do not. The commitment funds is is purely a poor decision because it's basically your savings account for those items. Now, the repair reserve that's above, um, under reserves, the one point six million dollars, that was approved by the voters, I wanna say twenty fourteen or fifteen, I think. Um, that we held a public meeting on um, last week or the week before last. Nobody showed up unfortunately, but we still had the meeting. Um, and you guys will vote later on to utilize some of that money for a couple of things. So there are those are the differences essentially. The top part is either you have to approve it or the voters have to approve it on the top part. The bottom part is definitely just your approval to fund it, to create one or to remove one.
So we can basically put in turf in the budget that year.
Yep.
And that's where it's gonna come from.
Yep. Yep. But because it's a capital project, you're really holding on that budget, so to speak, could it be a transfer to a capital project? So then, um, the next line, the reserve for tax reduction, that's three million dollars that we set aside every year to come into the regular general fund budget. And then unassigned fund balance, we have twenty four point five million dollars of unassigned fund balance, which makes our total reserves and fund balances at forty three point three million dollars. So we are in fantastic condition.
Is that more about the reserve for tax reduction, three million?
So what that is, is basically if um, we need to increase our budget or our budget increases and we don't have enough general fund, uh, state aid coming in or impact aid or something like that, we utilize that right on it. So basically, it's just a set aside to ensure that that much of our unassigned fund balance goes into the into the budget.
And so that keeps our tax levy at two hundred and fifty thousand.
Yep.
And we have to keep two fifty, keep our rating, isn't that?
Yeah, we, yeah, when we talked to the attorneys about reducing our our um, tax levy, they indicated that you don't want to go to zero. That's not a good thing to do. We need to have, you know, something there for tax levy purposes to keep our bond ratings up where they are. And so we settled at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We're gonna keep it there as long as we can. Um, we use the formula every year, you know, to determine technically, we could raise our taxes by two percent, which a whole lot of money anyway, we're leaving it at two hundred and fifty thousand. So next time, next uh, budget here, or not next budget here, geez, next board meeting, I will present the first time on the budget. Still.
So when you say raise taxes, we're allowed to raise by two percent, two percent of what?
Two hundred and fifty.
Okay, so if we were to raise taxes, if you give them here legally, we can only do two percent of two hundred and fifty thousand?
Yep.
Which really amounts to nothing?
Exactly.
Okay, twelve thousand dollars?
No, it's like five hundred dollars.
Oh, okay.
Yes, it's crazy. A lot of, you know, a lot of other places, there are school districts that have tax levies higher than our actual total budget, you know, across the state. Um, our budget, or not our budget, our tax levy when I first got here was three point two million. It went as high as, I think, three six and it's been going down since then. So two fifty for the next fifteen years.
So that three million, do we, is that just a flat number? We're gonna continue year after year after year? Are we gonna add to it or?
It could go up, it could go down, whichever fluctuation. We've just set a three million dollar number. Um, we're trying to use the unassigned fund balance because as you know, it's greater than the four percent that we have. Legally, we're at sixty two point two percent instead of four, but it, we can't help it. We are applying for the funding that we get and or that we're entitled to and we get it and we use it in a prudent manner. So that's why we have a. Okay, so this one, don't worry, your eyes are not freaking out there. Um, this is the long term facilities plan. So what we did in twenty twenty, I think it was, twenty three, twenty twenty one, I think it was, we did a daily condition survey. We took that survey, we worked with Young and Wright, the architax, and created a long term facilities plan. So as you can see in here, um, this first column is phase three point three, which is the construction happening at Prospect. These are some arc monies that we're using to do the new P A system that Marcy's working on and the theater lighting and sound system and the auditorium. This next little blue, um, it's actually purple, I guess, um, use of reserves, some things that we want to use, those reserves that I just talked about for, and then base three point four, which you can see the construction fence outside is breaking ground for that. Maintenance projects doesn't really have anything yet because we're still kind of working that in, but each year, um, can you get rid of that? Yours, sharing things, yeah. Yeah, and there we go. So in here, twenty three, twenty four, these are the things that we want to work on in twenty three, twenty four. So phase four is the high school track and field and all that stuff out there. So next fall, I think, is when we'll start moving on that stuff. And then also we have these other items within the capital or not in the capital project, but in the B C S priorities and intermediate school that we would like to tackle. So maybe we'll do another capital project to cover some of these things. These are the things that we want to start looking at that we determined as a group that went through this, that these are priorities. Maybe we'll do another project at the end of twenty three, twenty four and have a phase five. Maybe we'll push it up one more year because there's so many projects happening right now. Um, you can, Karen. Oh, I can do that. Okay, good. Now, yeah. So we have, um, this is a bunch of properties that we're going to vote on March twenty first. And we have um, outlay for capital project, Prospect classrooms, about seventy two thousand, which tack on all the architectural fees, all that good kind of stuff, and you end up with a hundred thousand dollar project that we can do each year without having to go through the entire capital project process through state aid. So we wanna, um, our game plan is to renovate a few of the Prospect classrooms each year because they really haven't been renovated probably since I was there and that was quite a while ago. Um, I won't mention how long, but it was a while ago. So we want to take a look at those things, want to take a look at where can we create, build, renovate a building, et cetera, for our early childhood center. We also are in desperate need of a transportation center. So we're working on those little things in the background all the time. So as we add things um, to this, I'm updating this, I have it plastered on my wall in my office. So anytime somebody mentions something, I'm kind of jotting it down and where are we gonna go from here? So this is really kind of, this is all laid out for, it goes up, I think it's to twenty nine uh, for different things. So we're hoping maybe in twenty four, we look at field house, athletic storage building, um, and the Betts Park net zero house, what that is essentially, uh, later on, you're going to approve, hopefully, the contract to demo and obey the Hoy Street houses. When those come down, we want part of it to be a garden, community garden for the students to have a learning space, grow the vegetables, et cetera, use them in the cafeteria, that kind of a thing. We also want to have like a pavilion there with restrooms and a teaching space that we can use during the school day for our students and we could rent out on the weekends for family practice, et cetera. So that's really, um, in a tiny nutshell, the facility, long term facilities. Yeah, so the, so these are the things that we're really kind of looking at as the transportation facility, the little warrior academy, AKA early childhood learning center and athletic field house and Betts Park playground, we've already purchased the equipment, it's not here yet, but we want to do a community build this spring uh, to get the Betts Park playground in. Kim has also requested a playground at Prospect be replaced. Uh, the older kids playground at Prospect, because it's like seventeen years old or something like that and pieces are breaking and so forth. So we'll be looking at that potentially, uh, the pavilion like I just talked about and additional parking over at Betts Park. So this is the long term financial plan. So in nineteen twenty, we had revenues of forty four point five million dollars, twenty twenty one, we had fifty two point three, twenty one, twenty two, fifty one point eight. This year, we projected our budget at forty seven point four, and I already know it's gonna be over that. And the reason being is that I project out Native American tuition and it's higher every darn year. Um, because it seems that the more money we spend, the more money we get through the Native American tuition, through transportation and also through impacting. Which, by the way, we got our first payment for twenty three impact aid today of eight point six million dollars.
Where do we think we're gonna get full for this year?
Little over eighteen. Um, and then so my projection for twenty three, twenty four, I'm projecting about forty eight point five. I can tell you that the budgets that I got in with everybody's wish lists that I didn't ask for is well over fifty two million dollars. So it's gonna get pared down. Uh, my projection for twenty four, twenty five is fifty one point one and twenty five, twenty six is fifty two point six. Primarily, those increases in there are due to increases in state aid and financial or foundation aid for state aid and slight impact aid increases as well. The next page matches the expenses. So as you can see, the actual for twenty one point two, we're budgeted for forty seven point four for this year. My projection for next year is forty eight point five, which I need to cut about four million dollars of what we have right now. And you can see as we go along, if we continue on this path, our budget is going to be outrageous. So we really need to take a look at what we're doing here, what it's costing us and um, is it working? So um, that's a big task. It's not anything that one person can do. So we'll be meeting, um, as, you know, the board with you, Mark and Tiffany and I will be meeting, et cetera, um, going through the budgets for this year and then obviously again for years after that. Next is, okay, so for twenty three, twenty four, we still have arc monies left. Twenty four, twenty five, we're gonna need to make some decisions, let's see what programs will continue or discontinue. Because there are seven point six million dollars in ARPS, SIRS, all those good acronyms, basically the CARES Act COVID monies, um, and they go away. So a lot of schools are going to be in major trouble because they funded all these different positions for them and that kind of stuff. They don't have the money to replace it. We do. But we need to also make sure that we're spending it prudently so that if we are continuing with something, that it's really something that's working for our kids and not just something because we have money to spend. And again, the two percent tax cap is a max for two percent this year. Oh, okay, here's all the grant money. So um, you take a look, we have ten point three million dollars scheduled for this year, this fiscal hearing grant monies. Two point three of it will really continue on for the next fifteen years. That seven point three plus the six hundred and fifteen, those two numbers go away. Those are the ones on the far right are competitive. We can apply for them, maybe we'll get them, maybe we won't. The seven point three is the arc monies, and I must be missing something on there, because it's truly seven six. Um, oh, here's that, it's not there, because that one's actually already over, that's why. So um, you know, we need to replace essentially almost eight million dollars worth of money. What we're spending, you know, in grants right now versus what we won't have comes September one, or yeah, October one, sorry, of next year. Um, that bottom one, one oh three, three, four, four, that one is from the state, it's for New York State healthcare workers bonus. So they gave us a hundred and three thousand dollars, we had to pay it right back out to them, please. Step one is an annual one, if Fergonia Funds has their funding, we'll get that one back hopefully. Healthy Schools and Communities, that one changes on a year to year basis, it's through Erie One Bosse's for Health and Lawless, for our students. Garment Family was a one time thing, um, necked up as over four years, that's four twenty five, over the four years. Um, Archives Grant. That was the first year that we got it and Alicia and I are working on the next version, so hopefully we'll get a lot more next time. And that's really to archive all of our records, student records and all the financial and all the payroll records and all the board records and all that. Uh, Stepping Stones is one we've gotten awarded for the second time. That comes from the NISA uh, foundation, NISA board. So that's the grant progress. And so your takeaways are, we are very financially healthy. How do we stay this way? Really through strategic planning and making sure that we're using our funding in the best possible way for our kids and our programs. And then quarterly reviews of long range capital and financial planning. So my goal from here is to, you'll see me back in three months, we'll talk about either long range financial planning or the facilities planning. Then in the next three months, we'll do the next one. But then next, so we'll, I'll keep rotating from there. So you'll see me every couple of months speaking about one of the two of them. Unless there's no changes, which would be unusual. But I think that's it. Any other questions?
Anyone? When do we start meeting on planning?
On what?
On the planning.
Oh, I don't know. That's uh, something we need to determine with Mark and Tiffany when we're gonna start working on that.
Sounds like the retreat.
Yeah, there's a lot, lots of steps to it, so.
Thanks, man.
Thank you.
Yep.
Item B is our information on our special meeting on vote on March twenty first, twenty twenty three. So we are going to be holding um, a special meeting and vote, March twenty first, twenty twenty three, in the high school gym from noon to nine. Um, the proposition, the proposition will be on the acquisition of seven parcels of property. So voter registration will be February twenty seven twenty twenty three, to be held in the district first office on seven thirty four Broad Street and nine four. Okay, anything else to add to that? Anyone? Then we will move on to our public communications. Do you have anybody here to speak to?
Uh, actually, Mr. Gill had a incident come up and was unable to attend. Uh, you'll recall, Mr. Gill is our new project or Title Six Project Director. He did ask me to read the statement on his behalf. Uh, so I will pretend to be Justin Gill for the time being. Uh, my name is Justin Gill. I am the Title Six Project Director and I wanted to give a quick update of Title Six so far in twenty twenty three. We are currently working on a field trip to the University of Buffalo North Campus at the Jacobs School of Medicine. We have approximately four people looking to present to students, staff and the community in the upcoming months. I've learned, I've been learning from Kristen Dudak on the grant management side of this position. I've been making sure I keep the Title Six Parent Committee up to date of the current scheduling and planning. I've also been working hand in hand with not only the Native American curriculum team, but other building level staff. I have also been very appreciative of the help provided by Michelle Arretti and the family school liaisons. We are currently still compiling information from the current grant while planning for the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four grant. Last but not least, Title Six now has an email, which is Title Six, so that's T I T L E V I, so the six is the Roman numeral V I at Salamanca NY dot org. Um, and that is a email that will be consistent so that we can increase the ability for people to communicate with the Title Six Committee. Thank you.
And we'll move on to central office message.
Um, so this past month, we have been focusing on staff and student well being. Uh, we are working with Dr. Garrison from A Valute Beans and staff members in all three buildings have been administered a well being survey. Um, on February seventeenth, uh, Dr. Garrison and Maria Van Remen will be coming to work with focus groups and analyze data based on the results of the survey. They will also be working one on one with our principals and administration. Uh, students in grades four through twelve will also be taking a well being survey when they return from break. This data will also be analyzed and our counseling team will be working to ensure that students at all levels, um, their needs are being met and we can make action plans and basically personal well being plans with each child. Um, this past week is mid year check in, we've been doing data meetings. Um, I'm really proud of all the grade levels. One of the things that they've added on, they keep adding on a layer to the to the data means, which is amazing for children, is the last, the last set of data means they added on growth goals for students in classrooms and I got to witness classroom celebrating their growth goals. And our principals going in the classrooms as well and celebrating with the kids and giving them extra praise for achieving their goals. So these past meetings, we did the same, classrooms have begun creating action plans along with creating not only classroom goals, but individual student goals as well. Um, I have one update I want to just, for Chris Seaver, uh, Chris Seaver today, he held the student of the a Warrior of the Month and an attendance breakfast for students that have had success. And it was a great turnout and the kids were super happy to be there. They have, they had a hot breakfast together and Chris and Lloyd were both there and we're super proud of them as well. Thank you.
So, thank you. Karen, do you have anything else to add?
Uh, no.
Okay, then, thank you. Then we'll go on to our board message, start with Paul Flip.
I'm gonna have to move this seat, you know? But anyway, I was gonna make it short and sweet. Happy Valentine's Day to everybody and just keep up the good work. Um, there's some things I I'm feeling about um, our students. I, I have this new position with the nation and I've seen a lot of where been talking to and been around a lot of our students and I worry a lot. But at the same time, I'm seeing some really nice things happening to our students and how they're turning out, what they're doing, what they're saying and their involvement with the school. So I think that's awesome. So let's keep doing it. All right, thank you.
Ben? Uh-uh, just gonna say happy Valentine's Day and try to keep meaning short for you guys that we can go and enjoy some nice weather. So February is something else this year.
Not for Carrie, son.
Yeah.
Three feet of snow.
Hold on, let me check the weather.
It's not gonna happen tomorrow. Um, I just want to say, um, as well, um, happy Valentine's Day to everybody. Um, I see a lot of, a lot of red and pink out there, so I know everybody's celebrating, so. And also, um, put the good word too, so it's uh, gonna pay a lot of dividends down. Thank you.
Yeah. Carrie?
My loss for words tonight.
Mark it down.
Well, you know, one of the things going on. I say most of the meetings, I thank our staff, all of our staff, from our maintenance folks to our teaching staff, to our administrators, to my colleagues on the board, everybody. I thank you all for always trying to do your best and doing what's best for our kids. That's what it really comes down to. Um, I'm just enjoying the weather and hoping ski season lasts three more months. Thank you all.
I'd like to wish everyone a happy Valentine's Day too. Um, I'm sure that you love the board so much, you just wanted to spend the night with us. Uh, I want to reiterate kind of on that same sentiment that it's it's not just one person that's gonna help change this district, it's everybody. Um, to make our students better, to make our staff better, to make our administrators better, to make the board better. And we all need input from everyone. So again, and people, the students, staff, administrators, other board members, don't be afraid to share ideas. Uh, even if they're, you think they might be crazy ideas because we try to take the crazy and harness it into real potential of, hey, that's a great idea. Um, and we all need to work together to get that way. It's not a Dr. Beeler's not gonna do it alone, Mrs. Jimmichy's not gonna do it alone, each of the board members aren't gonna It's not a, Dr. Beeler's not going to do it alone, Mrs. Giannici is not going to do it alone, each of the board members aren't going to do it. Um, we have to work together, with the administrators, with the staff, with the students to get our district to where it needs to be. And so my message is always trying to be, how can we all work together to be the best that we can be? And um, for the students that are here, don't be afraid to advocate for your problems, for things that you want to see in the school district. Because you might have a great idea that we haven't thought about that we want to know about. Um, so please, don't be afraid to reach out or even say, hey, I want to sign up for public participation. And give us a speed up because we love to hear from the students and we love to hear from the community. Uh, so please, you know, I'm always going to encourage people to speak and let us know what your ideas are. So that's my message. Dr. Beeler, how about you?
Sure, just a couple of things. Um, I would like to provide a brief update on the progress that we have made so far with our logo forum. I'm just going to share my screen here. Uh, I just wanted to draw everyone's attention to a portion of our website. Uh, it's located, if you go down to the superintendent, and these are alphabetical here. Uh, let's see. So under the superintendent of schools, you'll see district branding and identity. And here you will find a chronological report of everything that has taken place to this point. So uh, the initial introduction here discusses the November seventeenth memo, which is um, what precipitated the discussions that are ongoing. And then all of the forums of which we have held for are recorded and down below. And then there's sort of a historic um, uh, summary of what has happened to each point. One of our particular promises to the community and to our students is that this process is going to be completely open and transparent. I also want to thank those individuals who have taken time to participate. Uh, each one of our sessions have been done in a professional and civil manner where even opposing positions were respected. Um, and that goes a long way to speaking about our community. So that really is something that we should take pride in. Um, I also wanted to take a moment to thank our educators. Uh, February and March can be challenging months. Last week in particular, we saw a significant increase in behaviors as well as adult behaviors. And when I say adult behaviors, I'm talking also about parents. Uh, and I think at our next board meeting, we're going to have a little bit of a discussion over some boundaries. Um, unfortunately, many of our teaching staff and administrators have been, um, I'll say verbally attacked by some of the adults in the community and parents. And we need to be uh, resolved in that that is not acceptable. So uh, there will be more coming uh, with regard to that. But I wanted to just extend my gratitude for our staff that works very hard at what they do and sometimes don't get the recognition uh, that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to our consent agenda. So we need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Ted. Second by Flip. Are there any questions on the consent agenda? All in favor? I, opposed, abstain, motion carried. There's no old business, under new business, we have items to declare surplus, no dust collector and a hobby laser engraver and chiller. Uh, so we need a motion to approve those items and surplus.
Motion.
So I did, motion by Dale, second by Carrie, are there any questions? All in favor? I, opposed, abstain, motion carried. Item B is a MOA for our Consolidated Services Unit regarding a senior mechanic position. So we need a motion to approve that MOA.
Motion.
Second, motion by Ted, second by Carrie, are there any questions? All in favor? I, opposed, abstain, motion carried. Item C is an MOA with a Salamaca Support Staff Organization. So we need a uh, motion to approve that MOA regarding the bus driver signing bonus.
Motion.
Motion by Dale.
Sure.
Second by Flip, are there any questions on this MOA? All in favor? I, opposed, abstaining, motion carried. Item D is a motion to create uh, nine teacher assistant positions and four school monitor positions. So we need a motion to, to creation. Motion by Flip. Second by Carrie, are there any questions? All in favor? I, opposed, abstain, motion carried. Item F is our reserve, reserve fund transfer to the capital project phase three point four. So we're transferring um, one hundred and forty-six thousand eight hundred for freight lift replacement. And eight hundred and thirteen thousand seven hundred for each pool, each bag replacement for a total of nine hundred and sixty thousand five hundred. So we need a motion to transfer those reserve funds.
Motion.
Motion by Carrie.
Second.
Second by Flip, are there any questions? All in favor? I, opposed, abstain, motion carried. Item F is uh, our contract and bid award for our Holy Street demolition for the amount of one hundred and thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight dollars for H K route. So we need a motion to accept the bid and award the contract.
Motion.
Motion by Ted.
Second.
Second by Dale, are there any questions? All in favor? I, opposed, abstain, motion carried. Item G is uh, our award for three points for our high school district office addition and alterations for A W Ferrell and Son for two hundred thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars for roofing. So we need a motion to approve that bid and award the contract.
Motion.
Motion by Dale.
Second.
Second by Ted, are there any questions? All in favor? I, opposed, abstain, motion carries. Item H is our construction management firm, which is Turner Construction Company. And this is contract is to hire Turner as a construction manager for capital improvement project for phase four. We need a motion to accept the letter of intent and award the contract. Motion by Chad. Second by Flip. Second by Flip. Are there any questions? All in favor? I, opposed, abstain, motion carried. Item I is our Bosse's twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four unit cost methodology. So we need a motion to approve uh, unit cost methodology.
Motion.
Motion by Carrie. Second by Dale, are there any questions? All in favor? I, opposed, abstain, motion carried. Item J is, we need a motion to create Juanas Pilvers Club. So we need a motion to create that club.
Motion.
On my Ted.
Second.
Second by Flip, are there any questions? All in favor? I, opposed, abstain, motion carried. Item K is our annual election budget vote, voter registration day petitions and announcements. So again, Tuesday, May sixteenth is going to be our annual uh, board election. Um, and we have uh, let's see. You can file petitions to April twenty-six, twenty twenty-three, is that correct? Yeah, it's not just by the clock. Um, and then we will have the budget vote and the board member elections start from the sixteenth, from noon to nine. Um, and petitions are now being accepted at the beginning today, correct? Or tomorrow, sorry, tomorrow. And they need to be turned in again by April twenty-six, twenty twenty-three, by five P M. So we need a motion.
Two seats.
Yes, two seats are available.
Over registration is April twenty-fifth, ninety-four.
Okay. Over registration, okay, so we need a motion to approve the resolution.
Motion.
Motion by Carrie.
Second.
Second by Flip, are there any questions? All in favor? I, opposed, abstain, motion carried. Item eight is our personnel consent agenda. Just a little lengthy. Um, item A B, we need a motion to approve the personnel consent agenda items listed in.
Second.
Motion by Ted, second by Dale, are there any questions? All in favors? I, opposed, abstain, motion carried. Did we have any new staff that we would like to announce?
Uh, let's see, I'm actually going to defer to our principals. I'm not sure who is there in the audience. I don't see anybody online uh, that we have just appointed. I'll take the silence as we will welcome them when we see them. Um, if I could just make one note, you know, a few moments ago uh, on this topic, you created nine teaching assistant positions. And I didn't want that to just sort of get glossed over. Um, that's a result of some needs that we saw by students in our Prospect Elementary School. And I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge and thank the board as well as Ms. Magiera for um, finding the funding to be able to create positions that will have a significant impact and improvement on our students uh, lives and education the day that those individuals walked into the building. That's not something that many districts can do mid-year, so thank you.
Again, that's what we want to do. If there's a need, we want to try to address it and help solve any problems we have, so that's, thank you for everyone. Item D is our special vote announcement, again on March twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. The election chairperson is myself, the alternate is Mr. Gary John. Uh, we do have Inspector of Elections for Sherman Bell, Pacarella, Mel, Mel Fellows. Linda Blood, Wee Boy, Carmen's Eva, Joey Quinlan, Mary Fellow, Davies, Shirley, Belandra. Uh, that will be appointed as the infection, Inspector of Elections. Um, with a rate of two hundred dollars a day. The inspector of, the chief inspector will be two hundred and ten dollars a day. We also have Sue and Busky and Nancy Sedlack as substitutes for Inspector of Elections. So we need a motion to approve that resolution.
Motion.
Motion by Dale, second by Carrie, all in favor? I, opposed, abstain, motion carried. Uh, again, we have our budget number, our budget vote and board member election to board member seats, May sixteen, twenty twenty-three. Again, this resolution is for the election chairperson, the alternate, the inspector of election and then the chief election inspector and substitutes. So we need a motion to approve those.
Motion.
Motion by Ted.
Second.
Second by Flip, are there any questions? All in favor? I, opposed, abstain, motion carried. Item nine is our board information discussion reports. We have a voluntary transfer, um, enrollment report, transportation report, and then our upcoming events. So we do have, um, the finance meeting was canceled for the twenty-first. We have winter break from the tenia through the twenty-fourth. And our next personnel meeting will be February twenty-third. Uh, and our next Board of Education meeting will be February twenty-eighth. With that, uh, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Motion. Second.
By Carrie, second by Dale, all in favor? I, opposed, abstain, motion carried. Thank you all for coming, I hope you have a great Valentine's Day.